All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 13th Dovlin Town Meeting. We'll begin with the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have the roll call of the board.
Bre, present.
Rex Snyder, present.
Gene Gabbert, present.
Nathan Alrich is present.
Dan Wicker is absent tonight. First up, we've got a couple of guests with us from Big B. We've got Dean and Jeremy. If you guys don't mind to stand and introduce yourselves and your title for the folks at home that are watching on camera and then we'll discuss our issues.
Jeremy Lovell, Sales rep.
I'm Dean Gardner, Manager.
All right, I'd like to welcome you both. I'm sure you probably know why you're here. Again, we're having some issues with the trash cans getting picked up and so forth. I guess, what's our next step? Where do we go from here? You know, the word aggravation is just kind of beyond comprehending right now, so what do we do? What would you guys do if you were sitting in my seat?
Well...
We had two town board members got their trash missed this week, so that really, really got them topped off now, so bad timing.
Who was it? Mine's set all last week.
Mine, and it was the first time, so I didn't call in, it's no big deal, but it is the first time.
Right. Yours set all last week and never got picked up? Mine's right there on the 40. It's right there in front of the business. Want to jump in?
Well, yeah, I mean, first of all, first of all, I would say, you know, we're not perfect, by no means. Everyone does, we make mistakes, obviously. But we try to do rebound real quick and fix them as quick as we can. You're the first one, I think, Gene, that I've heard of ever saying a week.
Right.
So, most times, it's picked up Tuesday, Wednesday, right in there. Not in case, however, it is the way it is now with the economy the way it is. Next month will be two years for me at Big B, and I can't tell you how many drivers I've had. They don't want to work, and it has nothing to do with the wages or the insurance for the trucks. People just don't want to work.
One thing I've always wondered, this isn't a solution, but when you need to get a big trash pickup, you call Big B directly and you schedule it with them. So, why, when this happens, or a different issue, why are they calling Dublin instead of Big B to resolve the issue?
My guess is that's because it goes through the town, so you guys know what's going on here. Middletown does the same thing. They email the treasurer, they call us, we go pick it up.
We, a lot of them call here, and then I send them, have them call them when it comes to big pickup.
Yeah, the big bulk items and stuff doesn't go through the town? That's something individual, you know what I mean? So, that's why they call us directly.
They schedule that.
Directly for that, those big bulk items?
No, it's included.
Yeah, we do, we do that, free of charge.
Towns typically have it in their contract, big bulk items in their contract. If you're Dublin, I want 550 North, you get a couple a year for free, and then after that, you get charged. Also, with some of the addresses that Julie sent me today, I looked at them, and I don't know why this is. And every time that I've had a Dublin address, I put it in Google Maps and it pulls up Dublin, Ireland, for some reason. Okay, so...
You can't do any of them, you have to put in Cambridge.
So, we go by, I go by what I think is pretty close to where it's at, and typically, it's a pretty ride.
So, I guess, when you get your, well, say, a new driver this week, do they actually go through the training process with somebody that's done their route or seen their route? Or do you just turn them loose and say, pick up the trash cans in Dublin?
Well, not a lot of drivers see every route. Unfortunately, we don't have enough employees to do that. As soon, my goal is, and has been since I started, to have two or three extra drivers that can fill in and do every truck. When I get to that point, somebody either gets mad and quits, or they don't show up to work. I've had several people sit across from me in the desk during the interview and say, "Yeah, I can pass the drug test," not show up for the drug test, and never come back. It's an ongoing problem with people not wanting to work.
So, like, do the drivers, do they have, like, a computer or a map or something they're going off of to, you know, kind of check it off as they go?
Yes, I was going to touch base on that, with the addresses that you sent me today. I Google mapped them, and they did come up in Dublin today, for some reason. All of them did. But the map that we have, Maple Street, for example, Mr. Smith, it has him on the north side of 40 in between, I want to say Johnson, but I don't know if that's right. But Google Maps has him on the south side of 40, down in the west corner. My map didn't have that. It had him up here, right? So, he's probably still not picked up today because I sent the driver back and they came to the spot on the north side and didn't go on the south side until I figured it out.
His argument, when he came in to me was, because he actually, his house sits off of Maple.
It sits more by the alley.
Yeah, it's off of the alley. But the US 40 customer sets hers out on that same alley, right across from his. She was picked up.
Right.
And I've had, I've had a few of those. I don't understand that.
It brings me back to, like, this town, this town is really confusing, honestly, with the alleys and the size of the trucks. They can't go down every road and fit in the sidearm, one-armed bandit. They cannot go down the alleys and pick things up. It's confusing to me, too, that one person on Maple Street didn't get picked up.
It just seems like a common, though, that they get the house before and after, but they always miss the one in the middle.
You're exactly, Nathan, you're exactly right. That's why it's confusing to me, is either A, because I'm just going to say, either A, they weren't out, and they called you and said they got missed. B, they were out, they got picked up, filled it up again. Or C, my driver didn't do it. And if there's a can here and a can here, I... I'm not saying this particular person...
No, I'm not saying this person, this person actually chasing down the block the week or two before that. And I had a same instance with a customer down here.
Which truck did he chase?
The one in the alley, so it's the rear load group.
That helps me, right?
Yeah, it's both in the same alley. It's just one's at this end and one was at this end. And then, you know, a week or two later, it didn't get picked up. He wasn't home, or she wasn't home to be able, in fact, when she was to be picked up, she was actually up there paying her bill, and she went home and let me have it. So, you know, but yet, again, the people across, and they're, both of them, I'm not saying everybody, both of them, their totes sit right there all the time.
No, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I'm not disagreeing.
But I do understand that there are totes.
To answer the question, was we pick up this one, not this one? I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not there.
Are we guys having the same issue in other towns, or are we just the only lucky ones?
You're the luck.
To be honest with you, you are the lucky ones. I mean, you know, believe me, it's just as frustrating for me.
Listen, let me hop in here for a second. I understand the frustration. I get it, you know what I mean? Like, just to go back off what Dean said, we're not a perfect company. I'm sure things aren't perfect in here. If you find a perfect company, let me know. Because the only other option you guys have as a town is Runkie. Okay? Because when you guys, when the residents refuse to pull the trash cans out of the alleyways, Bestway pulled their second bid when we rebid for rear loads.
Well, yeah, they can't. They shouldn't have bid to begin with, because they can't.
Waste Management didn't bid it at all.
We didn't ask them to.
Bestway, Bestway pulled it.
You have to allow them to bid, don't you?
We advertised it. They didn't make a bid to begin with.
Right, right. So, that narrows down to us and Runkie. And I just want to remind everyone again, Runkie's based, like, Bestway is based out of Michigan, but they have, they own a landfill out in Lynn, Indiana. They have transfer station, Hagerstown has a transfer station in Anderson. So, they have roots in other towns. Runkie's in Cincinnati, period. There's no, they have no other, when they pick up trash out in this, in this area, they bring it to our landfill and dump it, because they can't drive, it doesn't make sense to drive from Cincinnati, pick up trash here, drive it back to Cincinnati, dump it, drive back up here, finish the route. So, if a toe's broken, Dean has Runkie, and it works for us, because the town he lives in uses Runkie. How long did it take your toe to get fixed?
Took a week for me to get a toe.
Took over a week to get him a new toe, when his was broke. We hired my uncle, who's retired, who was just sitting around with nothing to do. We paid him a good wage. We just bought a $16,000 box truck. For him, that's all he does now. We hire someone to go around and fix lids and wheels, or swap out totes if they're broke, or whatever. So, we've got someone, you know, trying to help in that area as well. We got one guy specifically.
He fixed one today that wasn't on the list, over at the department.
Yeah, and he's good about that. I mean, he's, he's of our age and older, of people who want, you know, even though he's already retired, he's 69 years old and still wants to work, and he's of that working generation that there was two on the list today here in Dublin that needed fixing. He saw another one that was broken that wasn't on the list and went ahead and swapped it out. Yeah, swapped it out anyways. And that's, that's how he works. But, you know, what I was, what I was getting at at Runkie is, if you have a broken toe, or if Mary Lou over here on Maple Street calls, and there again, if one person on one street calls, in my, to me, I've been doing this for 10 years. Dean's been there too, I've been there 10. It's very rare that a driver, regardless, will pick everyone up on the street and just miss one person. What does that typically tell you? If they pick up everyone on the street, and you only have one person on a whole street that wasn't picked up, tells me after 10 years of doing this, that they didn't have their trash out in time. They're not going to go pick everyone else up on the street and just miss this one on purpose, you know what I mean?
At times.
I'm not saying it doesn't happen.
There's always exceptions to the rule, right? There's always one bad apple in the punch, but...
Typically, for the most part, after 10 years, if the whole street's picked up and one person's missed, I automatically jump to, man, they must not have had it out. Or like Dean said, they may have refilled it, had more trash, and then called, because it's easy to call. And I'm not, I'm not saying everyone does this, but it's easy for a customer to call in here and say, "Hey, Big B missed me today. They went, they knew they had extra trash in the garage or something, and filled it back up," or "They just forgot to set it out."
The difference, the difference in a town, though, and in just a random country route is, I don't send them back to the country route. They're going to wait a week, right? I don't do that for towns.
But that's, but that's where I was getting at, too, is, as soon as you email us about a broken toe or a missed customer, we don't even ask, hey, was it Mary Lou that, the only one not picked up on the street? We come back and get it regardless of what the reason is, you know what I mean? My point in being, and I'm not trying to speak, because I like Runkie, they're a good company, but you think they're going to come from Cincinnati and get Mary Lou, who forgot to set her trash out? You know what I mean? Or whatever, they're not going to. I've been dealing, I go up head-to-head with these guys every day for tips, what I've done. And, and I'm not putting them down by any means, but they're not going to come from us. Like I said, he had a perfect example. He had to wait a week to get a tote fixed, where we're trying to get out, we made, we created a position for a guy and went and spent $16,000 on a truck just for him to go around and fix totes. So, we're trying to combat the issues, you know what I mean? But there again, in fact, we're not perfect.
How many times have you been in this, Gene?
Two.
Two, how many years, how many years have we had, I don't know?
Three.
Three? How about you, one time?
I have one customer down there that it's in the same place. It's always, she doesn't move it. And you get that email, you know, at least twice a month.
So, put me in on your laptop, or your iPad, or whatever you guys carry with the route. Is there such a thing that when they pick that trash can up, they got a check mark on it that says that job is complete?
That's correct.
So, are they just going to check marks at the end of the day?
You've got to understand things. You've got to understand how people work, right? If you go around the country and you've got two miles between stops, they hit start and stop at this one, they go two miles, they start and stop at that one. If you've got a street of 20, they start the street, finish the street, and then hit, you know what I mean? I've told them thousands of times, start, stop, every stop, right?
You actually can't click on the individual customer and say, "This trash can was picked up," check mark?
That's what I'm, that's exactly what I just told you, yes.
But they're working the whole block.
Start, stop on each individual customer, that's what I've told them to do. But they say, "Well, slows me down."
Is there a chance that one of the bosses rides with them for, you know, does a job shadow for a day?
That's, I just started that last week, actually, on a front-load truck on a Friday.
Yeah, you can see that with the mail routes, you know, sometimes the postmaster follows, makes sure they're on time and doing the right job, so...
With the big business, right, I mean, we're pretty small, and it's hard for me to get out of the office.
I'm just trying to keep you guys in business and our ears from getting burned off.
Listen, if I wasn't sitting here, then I wouldn't care either. I'm trying to keep myself in business, sitting around here telling you the truth. I'm not going to come in here and blow smoke, if you will. Facts are facts. People don't want to work. I, the lady today that ran that route, she said she wasn't coming back today. I said, "If you don't go back, don't come back tomorrow." What does that do for me, if she doesn't come back tomorrow? Now, it puts me in a bigger bind, because now I've got to find somebody next Monday, right? I don't have people knocking the door down for a job, and it's hard to keep people. Burger King in Newcastle was closed there last night because they had two employees. Somebody told me McDonald's is paying them daily to work. That's just the problem.
It's sad.
So, do you check, like, when Julie says this address didn't get picked up, do you pull up the map and make sure there's a check on it?
Yes.
Do you have a camera where they could, because...
The rear load, the rear load trucks do not have cameras that I can track and actually watch video. The one-armed bandit does.
Oh, okay.
However, the rear load trucks do have GPS on the radios, and I can track what roads they go down. Okay? It doesn't tell me every stop. She did go down Maple, the Maple Street the other day. Why she didn't pick up, I don't know. Maybe she got mad at him because he ran down the road yelling at him. I don't know, guys.
You know, if it's a case where, you know, something's trapped between cars or something, we need to address and know about it.
Listen, I'll be 100% honest again. If it's the rear load, there's no blocked, right?
They should be able to...
Unless it's behind a fence, behind a fence or up by the house, right?
As far as, I know, everybody puts a trash can in the same spot that they have for the past 50 years, since Rex did it on day one out of a pickup truck.
However, we don't have the same driver we've had for the last 50 years, right? You know what I mean?
Looking for a job?
Chimping, but not to trash.
Rex.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not trying to seem hateful, but it's just the truth. I'm not coming, like I said, I'm not, I don't have anything to hide. It is what it is. People get mad at Gene for whatever reason. No one picks up his trash. Maybe he had a box sticking out there that it wasn't supposed to be in, and it hit him in the head. I don't know. You know what I mean? People stick things in the trash, stick four feet high. Not supposed to do that. We pick it up anyway.
I was going to say, if that's the case, do you picture it and document it, so that way...
No, we just pick it up anyway, because ultimately, it doesn't matter to the customer, right? You know what I'm saying? Every piece of trash in that trash can is supposed to be in a bag. Every piece.
And they are, they are told that.
Everybody is, everybody is.
You know as well as I do that you're going to have some, we understand that you're going to have...
So, I guess my question to you is, what if I just started doing that? What if I said, "Well, I'm not picking that up, because it's not in bags?"
Well, and we've had that issue with the town.
But I'm not, I'm saying, what if I did, right? Then now, I'm coming to you guys, saying, "Hey, I need to meet with you guys," saying, "Your customers..."
Fair, it's fair. I'm not going to disagree with you.
I'm just saying, B, don't go anywhere, right? We're working through the problems.
Trust me, I want to support local as much as possible.
We pick things up that aren't supposed to be picked up. We make mistakes.
And we always try to get back out here.
In the same week.
Lenny, what do you got, sir? Anything to add that we haven't discussed yet?
No. No, I think it's, it's just, it's an ongoing problem that there's really, you know, we don't, you know, there's really not much of a solution for, you know, it's just, you know, people don't want to show up, people don't want to work, and, you know, you've got people that do work, and then they halfway do their job, and then everybody else has to hear about it, and that's where we're at.
I just want you guys to understand, it's not a Big B problem. It's an individual problem that's driving that truck that day. They're not doing their job efficiently.
Or the one in the back. I, you know, I told you, yeah, I told you that one day, you know, I have cameras, and he picked mine, I watched him pick mine up. My brother-in-law's is side-by-side to mine. He opened it up, looked in it. There was a, there was a bag in there.
I was going to address that, too. I know exactly what you're saying.
Shut the lid down, got on the track, and the truck went away.
What's going on there, Peter?
Correct, that's exactly right, Gene. That's exactly how they look at it. Well, they can go another week. I'm not going to do that. In our driver meetings, I tell them, if it's empty, pick it up. They pay for the service, pick it up. It doesn't, I don't care what you think, right? If it's empty, pick it up. One bag, pick it up. One cart and a, one empty cart and a pop, pick it up. It's simple. And it's just, it's just a humanity problem. I mean, it's just what it is. I understand the frustration, and again, I'm not trying to sound hateful. I'm frustrated, too, because I, you think I like, I like you, Julie, but I don't like a thousand emails, right? You know what I mean?
Well, it would be better if everybody would contact me right away, since I'm not doing this every, you know...
And then there again, like you said, staying in business and stuff, it's not cost-efficient for us to have to come back out here, when we already have been here. When you're paying the driver and the fuel and the insurance and the wear and tear on the truck, it's not cost-efficient to have to come back out here. But we do it because we're trying to keep you happy. We're trying to keep everyone happy, you know?
I mean, in a sense, Big B's kind of under the barrel with the drivers. You know, I mean, we don't have a line, a waiting at the door.
I had to, I had to take over the McDonald's down in Connersville, like, quickly, right there, what was the main room, right, when you kind of go...
30th.
30th McDonald's right there. They call me, Waste Management is the largest waste company in the world. We do east-central Indiana, you know what I mean? And they, they're the, they didn't pick the McDonald's up for two weeks. Can you imagine how much trash was piled up in those dumps, overflowing and on the ground for two weeks? Then it come for two weeks straight. And they're the largest waste company worldwide. I get emails at 3:00 in the morning from Thailand, you know what I mean, so...
I do understand the frustration. I want to put it in kind of like numbers situation, right? You have 400, roughly 400 residents here, right, that we pick up. I had seven, maybe, today, right? I'm just saying, normally, it's no more than 10, right? The five to seven range, out of 400, weekly, right? And I understand that everybody wants their trash picked, I want my trash picked up all the time, every time, because I pay for it. But seven out of 400, you know...
So, you're looking at 2% to 3%?
Roughly, and if you, 4, 8, 12, 1600 stops for the month, plus the extra, sometimes, some months have five weeks in it, we'll only pay for four. It's, the numbers aren't that big, right? It's just, unfortunately, it's a small group, just like high school, it costs trouble. It's always the same ones, right, for some reason. And I cannot pinpoint, other than maybe today, like I said, the map on my computer had it wrong to what Google Maps had. And I don't, that's not a me problem, that's not a driver problem, it's not a you problem, that's a computer problem. Like, we all said that when you type in 875 Maple Street, Dublin, Indiana, it goes to Highland. But I don't know why that is. I went through every address that you sent me today, and two, three of them were wrong. I had the wrong spot located in the town on my map, as opposed to Google Apps. Maybe that'll fix it. I don't know. And honestly, the driver's situation is probably never going to change, unfortunately. We're always going to, and I don't want to put a new, I don't want to fire that lady. I don't want to put a brand-new driver in here, because my God, next week, I'll have 30 calls. You know what I mean? I think it's just a problem that if we keep working together, trying to fix it, and then not write each other off, that's what we've got to do.
I guess I'm just hoping maybe a better training program, perhaps.
You tell me, give me an idea, because if I have, if I have 15 drivers, right, with 15 different routes in the same, I try to, it's more efficient to have the same driver do the same route every week.
I agree.
So, who do I have come train them to do this town? I have one driver that does this town every week, right? And it's one in the rear load and one in the side load, or in the side load. So, who, I, even if I rode with them for the week, I don't know where to go, just by what's based on the map, right? So, if you can think of something, a better training, I'm all ears, honestly. And I mean that. I'm not being facetious with it. I mean it. They said, when I get a new driver, and I have an opening, right, because that's why I put them in the truck, I put another driver in that truck to teach him how to drive and how to operate the truck, and then after two weeks, if you don't get it in two weeks, you've only seen the town twice, I get it. But I can't put five, six, seven months of training in, because then, what's the point in that? Now, I've got the same guy here five, six, seven months. Why am I training that guy? I might as well just use him, or her, whoever it is. It's, it is an, it's, for two years, I have racked my brain to try to figure this out. And I don't have a solution, other than keep hiring people that try to find one, you know, you have 10, and you throw one to the wall, throw them all to the wall, and the one that sticks really cares. The other one just bounce off, because you've got an arm anyway, because you need drivers. I can't hire drivers that have less than three years' experience, due to insurance reasons. I have to have experience in a truck. And most of the time, those guys are older and been driving semis, and they don't want to drive trash when they hear the word trash. I just know that I'm putting the best effort in to make it fit, make it work, when I hear something's wrong.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate you guys being here tonight.
Yeah. Don't think it's not, it's falling on deaf ears, because it's not. It's really not. You know, I don't, you think I want to spend time away with my family tonight to come here to talk to you about my drivers not doing their job? I don't want to do that, right? I will. I have reasons. It's just the truth, whether you like, the reasons are here now for the time. You've been missed one time in how many years? Three?
Yeah, like you said, I can go a week. It's one time. I'm not going to call it literally one time.
Most people can't, you know, I get it. Most people have a lot of trash, and they need picked up once a week. Or you have the retired lady or man that sits in the house at 10:00, well, they're not here today. You know, "Well, sir, we have problems. Man, we have, you know, they'll be there. We're going to get here, and it's not going to be the next week, unfortunately, you know, I apologize." Every effort is being put in to fix it, believe me. If you don't think my boss, he ain't on me, you know, I don't know what else to say, other than that's just what it is.
I'll keep you guys all night, but I do appreciate that.
Yeah, me and Lenny talk probably three or four times a week, sometimes, you know.
We'll start cutting it down.
I look at the phone, I look at the phone, and see Lenny, I'm like, ah.
Then he looks at his email and goes, huh.
But, on the computer, scheduling to be picked up. It's just what it is, and I do...
Listen, before we take off, I do want to add, I can't sit here and promise you it ain't going to happen again. Next week, you know what I mean, somebody's not going to get missed. But what I can promise you is that we'll be here to get it, you know what I mean? I can promise you that we won't break a toe, or break the wheel or the lids, or whatever, but I promise you, we'll be here to fix it, replace it, and I promise you, Dean, we'll get somebody here to pick the trash up, you know what I mean? He told, that one customer that we were talking about today on Maple Street, Dean told this woman driver that she had to come back here and get it today, and she said, "I'm not going back." And he said, "Then you don't have a job." I mean, that's how, sending the truck all the way back to get it.
I don't understand why she would care to come back.
Right, you're getting paid by the hour.
I was going to say, she's paid by the hour, and...
She was frustrated.
Bad drive from your car.
Maybe we need to start paying them on commission, you know? See what's up in Middletown area today, right? She wasn't on the south side of Indian County. She was up on the north side doing bulk items and stuff in Middletown on the west side. She didn't want to drive all over. She didn't have a choice. You really don't.
Just riding.
Yeah, and she didn't want to do it, and he, so, so we about put ourselves in a pickle, because he told us no, you know what I mean, told Dean no, and he said, "Well, then, nope. If you don't go get it, don't come back tomorrow," which put us in a whole other, you know, like I said.
That bar was set, man.
Uh-huh.
That bar's set.
Yeah, I mean, we about cost ourselves, and she's a decent driver, but we about cost us, because if Dean would have rolled over and said, "Okay, it's fine, go tomorrow," or, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever, just whenever you get time. He told her to go back today, and she refused. If you had a write-up written up, ready to go, then let her go, you know what I mean? So, it ended up getting picked up, so...
We're going to pick that. Maybe you save a lot of, maybe you give them an incentive to not miss to...
Well, I mean, we thought, the owner and I, with me being in sales, I've sat down and talked about that, but, you know, at the end of the day, they make, we start our drivers up more now than any other driving company around. And so, if that's not incentive enough to do your job, then I don't know what else, how much more money we're going to add, then it's just going to cost the company money, and people still miss them.
We give them a time and attendance bonus, start being worked on time.
Time and attendance bonus, everything.
Don't give Lenny any ideas.
I'm giving you, hey, man, you know, back, I mean, I'm 45 years old, and I've been working since I was 15, and there was no such thing as, "I'm going to give you an extra bonus if you show up on time every day for a month," you know what I mean? You're just expected to show up on time and do your job, you know what I mean, that you're getting paid to do. So, that, I mean, we've been doing that, trying to, I mean, it's stupid.
Did you get emptied yesterday, Gene?
Yeah, I got emptied yesterday.
Bre, you get emptied yesterday?
No, she's waiting.
I'm fine.
She got missed.
You got missed yesterday, okay. She's not one of those you sent me? She's not one of those you sent her?
No. Oh, you did? Yep.
You might be picked up.
You didn't call, I was, I was told. So I just, I, I, yeah.
That's another thing too, like if you were to call and say, hey, Jean didn't get picked up, so I don't discuss your business with her. I, we, so that's another reason why maybe we go through the town.
Okay.
Well, now you got a master list, I mean, that's ideal, so you run down here every ten minutes for somebody who called, so that would be ideal, you got to make one trip.
And I kind of know my ones that, you know, I know are going to wait to the last minute. Usually the ones, my repeat ones down here didn't have a problem for a long time. And I think it's because they're, they're on the end of that alley where the truck can't turn. They, they either gotta go down, back up, or they've got to walk from forty to get to it.
That's the alley where they were cutting the corner.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the alley they were cutting for one round to get around and cut into that lady's yard.
I think we talked about that this past, it's this past winter.
Yeah, I, I have had those that, you know, when they've not put it out.
And that's, and it's the ones that, you know, there again, it's, if it's the same ones and they wait till the last minute to put it out. Well, they get used to if, if we've got a driver who's been here for a while who gets here and they're used to their trash getting picked up at ten, ten, ten. That driver goes on vacation, new driver comes in, runs the route differently, eats air at eight. Now what, you know what I mean?
Well, sure you noticed the rearload truck's been here later into that. Because she took it upon herself to flip flop the route and go to, go over there and come over here last.
He puts, he puts time in to set the routes up a certain way. And then this, and it's not the first driver, but she, they come in and look at it and say, well, I think I'm going to run it like this.
What do I need him for?
What do I need him for, you know what I mean?
Maybe he can be a driver.
It's the same one I told, don't come back tomorrow, don't go there. And that's another issue that I've got to face.
Well, guys, I appreciate it. I know it's frustrating.
I guess it doesn't matter which end up, she runs first as long as she runs both ends of it.
Yeah. And, and the middle.
Well, he goes back to what he said, he says, well, she's usually here at eight o'clock. And then they pull their trash can thinking they're not coming, right? We've, people do that, it's crazy.
You got six in, you pulled out a nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, drivers go on vacations, driver gets sick, drivers, you know, and you got a replacement driver that comes in to do the town. They get here at seven, eight, nine in the morning and you're not used to your trash getting picked up till ten or eleven. I mean, I never, you know.
My trash gets picked up during the day while I'm gone. There was one time they came at three thirty in the morning. Must have had a driver calling or something. That's why you're told to put it out the night before.
Exactly. Oh, we're told seven, eight AM?
Yeah, you could, by, at least by seven to guarantee it, but I always put, like when I go home tonight, my trash gets picked up tomorrow, I'll send it out tonight, you know what I mean? That way I don't.
We encourage the night before, but bottom line is by Saturday.
Sunday night is what we're telling.
Actually, I don't know if you guys got the news, supposed to be by six now, but. That's not, we'll worry about that one, because my drivers, they come in at six. Or five thirty, it starts at six, right?
They're always like, come on.
They come in, they come in at six and you're gone by Saturday. Don't, hey, don't leave us, it, it's a work in progress and it's only been a couple of years for you guys too, right? So we kind of started around the same time.
You know, everybody is spoiled, you know, Rex has been doing it for forty years, you know, he never missed a beat. Started with a pickup truck, finally got a trash truck and, you know, everybody is spoiled.
Maybe instead of me riding with him, Rex can ride with him. A temporary job for a couple of weeks, I'll pay him, ride with him for a couple of years. I'm not joking, Rex.
And we'll pay you.
You want to say, so you think about that, you know what I mean, it's real talk. If that's the best way to help fix it, I'm all for it.
I appreciate that offer, definitely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You emailed me Nathan, not Julie, about him on the works.
Thanks, guys.
All right, we're going to bounce up Officer Stover's, we can get him out of here. Is he all right to stay? Absolutely, you can stay, but I just wanted to get you clear in case you get called.
I got you.
Animal neglect, there's one, one call for animal neglect. Two for, two animal problems, three business checks, three civil disputes. Two calls for drugs, one escort. One report of fireworks, one person flagged an officer down. One incident of harassment, one illegal burn issue. One call where an officer was sent to investigate a residential burglary. One mischief call, one theft call, three investigations. One murder vehicle accident involving property damage, one overdose, one personal assist. One, no, three speak with officers. One suspicious activity, two suspicious vehicles, ten traffic stops. One unsecure building, one unwanted person. One vacant house check. One vehicle lockout. Two wanted persons. Two welfare checks and. One wires down. Kind of a surprise. Thanks, sir. Any questions for Officer Stover? Appreciate it, sir. All right, we need to have everyone read, if you haven't yet, over your minutes. We do have two months because we did not have the previous month, last month due to technical issues. So we do need to approve two months and the minutes. If somebody would like to make that motion.
Separate or?
The motion.
Separately or?
That's up to you guys. They can go together if you don't have any issues with either of them, no typos or complaints or. Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, second all favor eye? Any opposed? There we go. All right, we got the fire report, sir?
Yep. Uh, zero ALS, BLS, one hundred and sixty-four. Nine one one with Reed, we had one in town and one in Cambridge City. Uh, fire runs, one legal burn, then one night of lines down from storm. Uh, Cambridge City, we had three runs to there, assist on structured fires, three thousand gallon water.
I like that, one night, not, not one run, one night.
Any questions for the fire chief? All right, moving right along. Uh, building commissioner, sir, what have you got?
I don't think we have any new ones this month, do we? I don't think so.
I remember running across anything, right?
Yeah, I don't think we've had any new ones this.
Mr. Stevens, was this last month or this month?
Last month.
Okay, then we don't have any.
All right, put your other hat on and put your superintendent's cap on and we'll go through the superintendent report.
All right, you have your, uh, reports. And then I guess we'll discuss this part-time help. I would like to hire someone.
Let's introduce your new guy first.
Okay. Uh, Guy Rittenhire is an employee, uh, my guy. He seems to be doing a great job, so pretty happy with that.
He shows up on time, comes in every day, doesn't stop in the middle of his route and go home, nothing like that.
He fits in because he gives Lenny and I both a hard time, so he fits in every day.
Good deal.
Today was my term.
He's permanent.
He's permanent.
He's permanent, okay.
He replaced Nick, so he's a full-time employee.
That's a big job.
It is a big job.
They fill them shoes or not.
Yeah, as a young man as he is, I asked him to hold on for several years and hopefully take over Lenny's job when Lenny's ready to retire, so. He's already done a little bit of sample of water testing, so he's getting his feet wet real quick, so.
Yep, electric wired down, yeah.
Yeah, his first night was the power storm we had, so.
He come back, he come back.
You want to tell a little bit about yourself just for, uh?
I'm born and raised in Cambridge, graduated from Centerville and.
Sorry.
Yeah, I like working here, you know, so.
Might tell your family connection?
I am twenty-four years old also, uh, yeah, Patsy Hall and Robert Hall were my grandparents. And now I'm about to live in one eighty mill as well.
You got a little baby coming?
I do have a baby on the way too, so, yeah.
So you're committed to stay?
Yes, I am, yes.
Can you live in Dublin?
Uh, not currently, but hopefully soon, very soon, the sooner the better.
You know where Rex is?
He's still in Westbury.
He's going to be Rex's next door neighbor, he sounds to me.
Okay.
All right, anything else, sir, we should know about?
All good.
All right, appreciate you being here, thank you. All right, carry on.
So I would like to look at hiring a gentleman for part-time help that, you know, maybe two days a week. Sixteen hours probably would be good and then that would, it would cut down on my temporary help as well, but. I just, I just think it would be nice to have that extra person, you know, if somebody's on vacation or something of that aspect happens and then we can, you know. The hours that I would bring them in would probably be from like nine to three thirty. And that would give an extra two hours if I needed, you know, that, to have those hours added up if I needed Dean to work an extra day, you know. Or here or there or whatever.
I'm going to let Julie jump in here, she's got a printout of the cost analysis. And they're kind of going by the fact that new employees not getting paid as much as old employees. Uh, of course, we don't have maintenance in the office any longer, so just some financial adjustments, so. She's, I'll let her explain this and see if we think we can financially accommodate sixteen-hour work week part-time employee.
I, I, we can definitely, um, for the remainder of this year, there's, we're, we're good there. Especially if we're not, you know, if eventually you're going to maneuver them in and, and slow down on the temporary person. Bless you, oh my, that, that should help. Um, this form shows, um, at the time I was asked to do this. Where Nick was from the time he left, what, um, hours, wages, benefits and everything through the end of the year. And where we are at, um, from that point for forty hours for the full-time person. And sixteen hours a week, um, was what I used for the part-time through the end of the year. And then, um, I was able to budget both of those into next year's. Budget as well, like, um, Nick said, or Nick, my God. Nathan said, you know, we're, we're starting out, um, a little less right now. Than where Nick was at, but, you know, that can change, especially with the water and stuff, we can always adjust that, um, as need be. So I think we're, uh, we're okay.
And the part-time person would not get benefits as strictly an hourly wage.
Right.
And if Nick's, or, uh, Lenny says, hey, I'm, you know, I definitely don't need you today, you can go home, I mean, he has the ability to do that, so.
Do you have this position in your salary ordinance or you need to amend your salary ordinance to take care of this?
Um, I do. Have a position in there. I think I do.
Well, because of Nancy.
Well, no, that's different, she's, that's, that's a whole different.
That's office help.
So that's office help. Um, I think it's in there, but I'm not sure, yeah, I may have to.
We just may need to do.
We may need to do an amendment for that, yeah.
Add three employees at one time.
Yeah, and I have it listed there, I don't know if I plugged in any numbers for this year, um, for that position. The temporary one is definitely in there, but, um, I'll have to look. Thank you.
And you got some vacation coming up, right, that you're wanting to get used by when?
But it has to be done by the end of the year.
We've got a certain time they're looking at.
Not right now, no, just.
So if we said the part-time guy could start. What, do you have a preference yourself, Julie? I mean, obviously on your first day of your payroll period.
Well, payroll starts on, we, we get paid weekly and payroll starts on Saturday, so. Whenever you want to. And we'll put it on record that when we were taking applications, um, for the full-time position. We have been interviewing, you know, talking to people about both positions as potential. So we do have, we did take applications and, and go through the process for the part-time person as well. So.
You want to keep a part-time, hire a part-time help.
Yes.
And keep your temporary too.
Yes, just at, at need basis.
Temporary just mows is all he does?
Yeah, just, yeah, he would just be called in to help mow because it's.
Season's about over with, so.
Right.
Probably wouldn't be using him very much.
No, no.
So I wonder maybe start the part-time person on the twenty-sixth, when you start getting into leaf pickup. That gives time for the mowing season to kind of settle down and.
Yeah. If you have to do the amendment for summer, that's what you want on the wage, but to not to exceed number, doesn't have to be the exact. Not to exceed.
Start them out at fifteen.
Fifteen.
How many hours you want to give part-time?
Sixteen.
And temporary gets, just where it takes a mow?
Yeah, he's, he's working.
There's only two to three days, he does a.
Yeah, he's working two to three days, six hours.
Yeah.
Six, six and a half hours a day, he's about twelve hours a week.
And you may find next summer you don't even need that, so.
That's right, you know.
We've had a lot of, you know, downtime with empty vacancy and of course, you know, getting guy trained a little bit, so. This year has kind of been a struggle, definitely, for a lot of us. Even the trash guys.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Well, it gives some, you know, leeway for Lenny to go ahead and take a vacation that he deserves and be able to keep things still going here. Especially now you got to have two guys to do certain things that we require, so. That way somebody's not sitting back in the garage watching TV or playing cards when we need to be out working, so. I think it helps to have somebody, you know, right there, kind of make sure you're motivated to stay working.
Speaking of working, what's the status of our boom truck?
Well, I used it the other day and it run fine, it's just when it gets hot, it just quits, so.
What's getting hot, the engine or the hydraulic system?
The engine, it's vapor locking. So, and it has an electric fuel pump on it and it's still vapor locking, so.
Which really isn't anything new, is that right? It's been doing that for several years.
Been doing that for several years, we've, I put an electric fuel pump on it when I first started and it seemed to have fixed it for a little while, but. It just seems to be getting worse.
Does it have an auxiliary cooling fan or is it just using the fan off the motor?
Fan off the motor, fan off the motor is cool.
Would need to add a fan, another fan to the radiator and push more air through it.
I don't know, we could try it, I mean, we could try it, you know. I know we have the radiator.
It's a lot cheaper solution than, than the truck.
We had the radiator, um, we had that radiator reworked last year, I think. We went through, cleaned it, repaired it and, uh, then we put it back in and. You know, it, I think it seemed to help, so, but it's just, you know, the truck's just vapor locking, it's just getting, getting hot, especially when it gets up in the eighties. I mean, it's, you know.
Do we need to reroute the fuel line, is it, think it's come too close to?
No, I already, I already did that, it was running up by the block in a steel line and then, so I routed it around away from the block, coming off the back of fire mark.
That gets boiling in the carburetor?
It probably.
What about the crossovers in the intake, they plugged that?
It doesn't, it doesn't run like they are.
So you, you mean the motion?
We do. Julie seems to be comfortable, um, I think it's probably a good idea, keeps the stress off of Lenny. Especially as, you know, probably Guy goes next year for his water license and study and so forth, it gives some leeway for that training to happen. And I'd like to actually get Guy into some serious training if he's going to stick with us, so that's what my, my hopes are, so.
Y'all make a motion to hire a part-time employee?
Okay, is there a second? All in favor, I?
I.
Any opposed? All right, most effective.
Starting wage would be fifteen dollars.
We'll start him on the nineteenth or twenty-sixth, does it matter?
It doesn't matter.
Got somebody?
Yeah.
We got to find somebody. Okay.
Yeah, we interviewed him, it's, uh, actually Marguerite's, the son or grandson?
It's her grandson.
Grandson, so he lives right there at Marguerite's house with her.
Oh, really?
So it's close.
You want to do it the nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
That'd probably be good.
The nineteenth would be better.
Your finish and, yeah.
If it don't work out, let us know. And that, of course, is if he's still interested.
He is, I just talked to him last week.
Okay.
He actually think.
So you want to, as far as the bucket truck goes, you want to check on that some more? Do you want to have a professional mechanic look at it? I would like to do something.
I've called, um, two or three different places and it's just old, nobody really wants to work on it, I think, you know, so. I mean, I can keep trying, you know, I.
And is it an option to replace the engine in it?
Well, I don't. It's old, I mean, we, we could, we could get an engine, but, I mean, it's, it's an old truck. It is, it's an old truck.
Hydraulic still firing right now.
Slow. Slow. It's slow.
Just pump pad or?
No, it's a brand-new pump. Yep, I changed the pump out two years ago, I think.
I think it worked long enough. Had another cooling fan to the radiator?
Yeah, I could try that. I mean, we, you know, just.
It's not that big a deal to bore it in and put it.
Right. It's just at some point, you know, you've, you know, you throw two hundred here, two hundred there, two hundred here, two hundred there. For as long you've got, you know, thousands of dollars wrapped up in something and it's still not working, so.
Well, I wonder if it's cheaper to put a new engine in it than just keep messing with it?
I, I don't know.
I don't know if it's necessarily the engine causing the problem.
No, it's, 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 I don't know. I, I, I have my own thoughts, but I don't know that they're right and I haven't tore into it.
Well, maybe the part-time help, you have some more time to check real deep into it, so we'll keep our fingers crossed on that.
And as far as the streetlights, we, you did order the bulbs?
Yes.
So we are waiting for bulbs coming in, so.
Yeah, without striking the main, you know?
Nope, I can do it till it stops.
And hope you're in a down position.
Hope I'm in a down position. If not, I'll look like Rex.
Grab somebody in the back.
You said you ordered poles for the banners that are missing ones, right?
Yes, I think we ordered those, I think Julie or Danny did.
I don't know whether I, yeah, I did.
I thought you ordered.
And they were on back order, but I haven't checked with her for a while.
I would like to take the ones down that are missing the poles, because like especially right now, the one in front of Mini Park, it's all wrapped around. And it, in my opinion, is disgraceful to the flag, so. If you guys could get those down, I would appreciate that, especially before the Veterans Day and so forth coming up, so. But they're just kind of flopping around, getting twisted in and then probably tearing them up, honestly, so. What about the SCADA? Got that on the list. Anything you want to talk about on that?
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead. I think we presented it when you weren't here last month and the board had questions and concerns. So we put it back on there so that you could kind of discuss your concerns, letting it maybe.
I just don't think in this day and age you're going to get something without the internet. I mean, I just don't.
Well, let's explain what the SCADA is for starters. It's the communication device that goes from the water plant to the water tower. And it tells it when it needs to turn the pumps on and turn the pumps off, basically, right? For the English-speaking folks at home. And with the new water upgrades we're doing, you're looking to install this new SCADA system. So you can efficiently do that. So that'll kind of be our opening act there, so.
Uh, no, but I still have stuff.
Now, I want to see, this SCADA that you're wanting to use, is it the internet or is it a standalone? It just communicates down the floor?
They all communicate through the internet anymore. So they have, you have a wireless, it's just like your cellphone, you know, but it's, this literally goes from this place to a headquarters, from the headquarters to the tower. So it goes, and then from the tower back to the headquarters and then to the, to the plant.
So to have a system that communicates just the tower, it might ramp up.
Yeah, and that's pretty much obsolete where you can't.
Sorry?
It's obsolete. You can't get parts and things. I mean, there's.
Things that are new and we can buy them. I don't like having anything to the internet that doesn't absolutely have to be.
Right.
Just an internet or just a cellphone. That just gives you, somebody the opportunity to play with it if you want to.
Right.
Other people sitting around on the above, nothing to figure out how to, how to mess up your system.
Right, but we're not, we don't control chlorine. We don't control putting any chemicals in or anything by that. The only thing this does is it tells what water level's here, what water level's here. And so if, if somebody was, let's say per se, you have a, you have a dual authentication, so you would have to, for me, to log in to that system, I would have to have two devices to do that. So whether it be a laptop or an iPad or my phone, I would have to have two devices to do that. And that eliminates somebody, a good part of somebody being able to break into that. The other thing is, is that when they, if they do get into our system, it's going to notify me that the worst they could do is shut our pumps off. So if they, if they shut our pumps off, I'm going to know that our pumps are off and I just have to go and check it out and see what's going on and turn the pumps back on.
It's not likely to poison the channel.
No, no, they can't. They, there's no, there is no mechanic, there's no electrical digital thing that tells it to put chlorine into the system. It's fed off of a gauge and a tube and, you know, you have to adjust that regulator on that for that to, to inject chlorine into the water system.
It still is a basic.
Yeah, and it's, and it's still a basic, it's a basic model. I mean, it's not, it's not anything huge and fancy. It's not the latest of latest. It's not that.
And because we're not a big community, we don't need all that other stuff that could be dangerous to the town, I guess is what, so.
It's, uh, so I called Rex this last month. We had an issue. Kelly's little dog was taking its last little breath when he was at Tibet. I was in a rush, this was Monday, that I was in a rush to, I'd done a backwash and was in a rush to try and get back to town to get Guy going, you know, it was his first day and, and I had literally forgot to turn the high-service pumps back on. I got a call of low water pressure. As soon as I got the call, I, I realized what I did. I knew what I did. So I called Rex and he went and turned those high-service pumps back on. If I had this system and I got that call, I could log in, dual authentication again. I could log in and go, oh, that pump's off and that pump's off. These got to go back on. We're done. There's no, there's no call-out. There's no paying me two hours to come and flip switches. There's no, you know, that's, that's, that's all gone at that point.
So this new system going to work with our control panel out there or is there, do you want to be changed over?
They're, they'll change it, that's all part of the SCADA.
That's part of SCADA.
Yes, yes. That's all part of the SCADA.
Now, the one good thing is you can.
Having concerns about the phone bill with Frontier, that would eliminate that.
That's no longer an issue.
I'm happy to hear that.
I don't know about the rest of it, but I can do that part.
And, and, you know, I mean.
And probably more reliable too than the phone line has been, because that one time where the phone line was down for a week or two, you had no idea the tower was off.
The tower was drained before it got to.
So that did create a problem for the town, whoever it was.
And so, you know, and that's, now the other, the other thing is, is, you know, I've been told that I'm, I'm too informative, so. I, I want you guys to know everything that I'm doing. I want you guys to be involved in that as much as you possibly want to be. And, you know, so, that being said, I, that's, that's why, you know, if you have questions, I want to be able to answer those for you. You know, I feel real comfortable with the system. It's, it's simple. It's easy to use. It's, I mean, it's, it's real user-friendly. And it's not a, it's not, it's not one of those that you have to go over here and over here and over here to do what you want to do.
What's your calls?
Well, it's in our grant. It's in our grant, yes.
Now, this system going to be for, you know, low water pressure?
Low water pressure.
Electric out?
Power outage.
Yeah.
I mean, and there's, you can put, so in the software, you can put up to, I think he told me you could put up to eight or ten different things that you want to be alerted about in there, you know, so, you know, if you have, say you have a, a, a motor that's, the drive's going bad in it or something, and it, it's going to alert you that there's low voltage coming from that motor or amps and it's, you know, it, you, you can do, you could put in what you want it to say.
Say we have a, this, a what-if, there was a major fire, like, you know, can you manually turn the pumps on?
Yes. The only issue with that is, is you cannot run, so we can't run both pumps at the same time because our filter system is not set up for that type of capacity. So, but yes, you could, I could turn, I, I could see the water level and I could flip a switch and say, okay, we're at one hundred and twenty-three point six and I'll shut it off. And I could shut it off and then we pump back down to one twenty. We need more water. I could kick it back on again. You know, if it's.
So if a pump is actually running and it physically stops and you can see that, that you're not flowing water, you can shut that one off and manually turn on the.
Then turn the other one on manually and let the flow.
So would you actually be able to put a flow meter on those and watch the flow as well remotely?
Yes, they, so this will, this also.
And that way you can also identify which one's doing the better.
It also records data, so it records your runtimes for each pump. It records gallons. It records, you know, a lot of stuff that I do and I write down on paper, it puts in. It's already there. I don't even have to go look at anything. I just pull it up, oh, there it is, and then I can write it down and throw it to file.
Be more digital, so.
Yeah, it's just, it's, just, just more easier, faster and less time-consuming. So that's, and that's why I gave you guys that. I wanted you guys to be able to see that system before we got to the point of, you know, this, this whole.
Now, is that the only system that you looked at so far exactly?
No, no, I looked at a Rafa system. I looked at Rob Jefferson's system, and then I looked at Michael's, his sewer system down there, which is, it's just like the water, but it's just sort of, but. And I looked at his system. So I've looked at, I've looked at four different systems. And this is one of them.
You think this will do us the best job?
Yeah.
Roll the cap approved?
Yeah, I liked, I liked the Rafa system, and I like this one. I think I like the Rafa system a little more. But the support isn't there, number one, as far as the technical support of it. It's not there like it is for this system. The, you know, there's, there's a guy in Indianapolis that could be here, you know, in an hour if there was a major issue that I need help with. The Rafa system, they're out of Chicago. So, you know, that was, that was the deal breaker for me. I want something close and something that, you know, will, will work.
All right, anything else for Lenny on that? Can we move on, move it along? What else have you got, sir? Um, I would like if you can, hopefully before the winter months hit, maneuver everything around as far as mowers and so forth, so you can get the trailer inside. So it's not sitting out in the snow.
Yeah.
I would really appreciate that. And you probably don't know leaf pickups yet.
No, no, I have to look at the calendar and see what we did last year and then see how fast the leaves return.
Time's getting close, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Are you going to do another, are you going to do a fall hydrant flush?
Yes, yes. I will, I will look at the calendar and get that scheduled too, because I need to do two of those.
All right, anything else for the superintendent before we give him a break? All right, we're going to put Julie on the spot for the first report.
Okay. My reports are just normal reports. When we, what we discussed last month, I think when IMPA was here, was them having a report that gave a monthly or semi-annually budget of how much money they'd spent and how much what our balance was. And I do get that monthly with my, my bill. So you have some of those from, I think I did it from November through June. Usage, because they're, they're always behind in my billing, but I can make sure that you get these. Each month, won't be a whole mess of them, but we'll, we'll just do one each month.
I think me and John, me and Bob jinxed the system, because we probably got our money's worth on the storm night.
Uh, yeah, yeah, you did.
You sent most of those out. It just happened during storms and sure enough.
Yep.
We got blasted that night. We must have had, what, six lines down?
Two, I'm sorry.
We have about six power lines down that night.
I think we had, what, three primaries and, I think it was three primaries and four or five secondaries.
So that's all I have for the reports. Yeah, everything else is, is on here, so I will, we can just go through old business.
You did print up a list of the officers that we did not have yet, so everybody should have a copy of that in your pile. So you can hang that on the fridge. That's probably a thing you ought to keep close.
I have, if we're going on down to old business.
Let's see if we can get him out.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, move sidewalks up to there.
He's probably turned, now he's full of trash.
Uh, he has, he has. I, I want to say that.
It's not that little thing.
Uh, I, I helped with this confusion on this bid. The original bid when we did this, the, the bid form showed yards, square yards, and his form that he gave me was square feet. I didn't catch it. And I don't think they caught it until afterwards, what was going on when it, it was such a good deal. So, um.
Basically, we got ourselves in a pickle.
We got ourselves in a pickle. They came back and gave us what it would actually have been. And then also in looking at this, when Milestone gave us this original bid form that we used, they bid north and south streets, all of it, as one, one line item. And there are some of the sidewalks that are in good repair. They don't need anything. So Jeff was very good about coming and meeting Lenny and they went up and down all the streets. And I think we would do better bang for our buck instead of being able to do three streets. They went through and, and got all the problem areas and, and they bid all of those problem areas to just cut those out and redo those. Those are within our original price. And actually below, so in doing.
So instead of doing the whole street, we would do portions of the street?
Yes, yes, the, the areas that are in bad shape. And that total was one hundred fifty-seven thousand five dollars. I don't know if you or Jeff have any more to say?
Where's that magic number at?
It's on the back page.
On the back page.
So do we have a new contract? We haven't officially signed a contract? We just awarded based off of the bid?
So just a couple of things. When we originally looked at it, we never actually looked at all of it originally, because we got into it, there's like, there's no way. Two things, there's no way that we felt like you guys would afford to do all of it. And second, we had several people that just had it redone two, three, four years ago that literally asked us to not do theirs. And then even when Lenny and I walked around, I don't know people who've done one. Lenny knows everybody who's done one.
He better.
And he, he called it like one guy and he, he asked to not replace it. Grass was over it and he just, so he just leave it the way it is, so. Why spend your guys' money doing something that they don't want? And it was in a location that didn't benefit nobody.
Appreciate your honesty.
Yeah, so, yeah, and so we literally, that's why we quoted the way we did it, is we thought we kind of thought, throw it out there. We wouldn't take anyone's bid to do all of it. And then if we just chose them, then Lenny and I or whoever would go around doing what we did. Not making excuses. I didn't actually see the form when it was handed out that evening. And then it was like when the, this portion was at two hundred forty-seven thousand. I knew that wasn't right. But then in my fault, I'd just come from the job, so like today, like no, no, it's no nothing. And I didn't know what right was, but I knew that wasn't right. And maybe I shouldn't spoke up then, but then I didn't know exactly what.
I thought it sounded too good to be true, but I was taken to that support.
Yeah, and, yeah, and, so. There's several areas that existing sidewalks, not always going to be replaced, it would be getting elevated. Some of them maybe as much as four or five inches from one. If you walk down them now, not only are they in bad shape, but there are water bombs in them. And it's just waiting to bend for forever. So it would be a much more enhanced. When you made a comment, I didn't think it was wrong about it being replacing portions. I think the smallest one is twenty-four, four feet long. but it being replacing portions, I think the smallest one is twenty-four feet long, so it's.
Stuck in size sections.
Exactly, so if there's another thirty, most of them, the rest of them are sixty feet or longer, which enables us to enhance elevation improvements, um, like we did the Germantown project, not from stones, but there's a lot of sixteen of sections, in our hands it's tied, and if they pay the lead, so, yeah, we think, um, you guys got a lot of trees, and then they discussed how they can deal with that, and they'll do it, and we're going to get all of it.
So, this is their total number that they require, and what is the total number we have to offer?
Two, two hundred. So, we are.
So, my question is, can you do the sidewalk we've been talking about forever, from the village apartments to the.
That's included.
That's included.
Lenny took care of that.
Over to the.
Perfect.
They can be happy by the minute.
Yes.
Um, something that I know, I know the trees are a big issue here, are there, one, how are we gonna handle areas like that, where the trees, uh, pretty well, they're overgrown, you know, do we reach out to the homeowner and say, you know, we're wanting to replace your sidewalk, but you're going to have to do something with your trees, or how do we handle that?
And I agree with you, unfortunately, you're totally right, so there is several sections that, there's a four-foot sidewalk, you've got them at three and a half, and by raising it, we're going to gain, I'd say a few inches plus several years, and we're not just going to pull right back over where it was in those cases, um, put on this, put places at five or four and a half, or fill in the blank there, um, there's a one, February, I think it's on Johnson, and within, it completely covers the.
Yeah.
And that'll have to have some limbs at least removed, and for us, A, for us to get to it, and B, to get some more access to it right now, so.
And it's legal for us to cut them, because it's in our right way to correct.
I believe so.
And we'll try to work with the property owner, and, I'm sure, not everyone's going to have that in every case, but, it's, um.
Literally.
It's unusable in that way.
Everyone's benefiting from that.
Yeah.
Feel good with it, sir? You walked every step of the way?
Yep, yep, we, uh, we drove around, we went, covered a lot of ground, and, um, discussed ways to make, make these sidewalks work, so even though we're fighting around trees, and things like that, you know, um, so, yeah, pretty comfortable with it.
And like I told Lenny, it's not like we're gonna come in here on Monday, and be done on Friday, and not be able to tell you ever again, if, you know, through this process, if you guys want to add another section, you know, do your thing, and it's the same rate, same thing we're here, we're, we're going to leave it.
We probably should now have a contract set up.
Yes.
Confusion as far as what's gonna be done, how much is gonna be paid.
Is that our end, or your end, or how do you guys normally do that? You guys normally provide it, there's a town providing it to you?
Technically, typically, the towns have done it prior, Germantown, we have, we have, of course.
I guess there's some copy of cases.
Yeah, I think that's something, you know, change the pace and town.
I'm putting this, spend extra money, that, that is so wrong, um, at the park, since we're getting our new four in place, in the big one and the little one, I'm wondering if we could have a section off of the existing sidewalk or parking lot come down to the little one, just, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think we honestly should, as far as, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, Bob, disability action.
Handicap access.
Be able to take the little chair down to the playground, yeah, I'm totally through with that.
So, um, okay.
Just in the park itself, going from one playground to the other playground?
Or, or for the side.
We could still approve this, get a contract.
Yes, 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 yes.
Do a change order.
Yes, we can do that.
I think go from, probably guessing, if that could be go from parking lot to that one.
Because the, the other sidewalk.
Yeah, it already enters into that.
Effective way to do it itself.
And I think we're always only get late fall, and then actually do what the department had to do to the park, instead of doing a couple of day weekend, you know, to get it for you guys to use it instead. And by all means, Lenny, if you guys got any rest and plan to work, I'm gonna be there.
So, I guess I need a motion to approve the new specs with the balance, uh, or with the quote of one hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred, five.
Five.
Sorry.
Well, that's for the total.
That's for the total, yes.
Total, what we measure.
The revised total.
And you think you'll be able to get it all done by the snow fly this year, or is it gonna be some spring, some springtime next year?
Probably.
I sure can, you can have that.
Any questions for anybody?
I mean, got money to pay for all this.
Yeah, we got, this is less, less.
So, before the motion's made, I guess I have a question, on the payment schedule, is there?
We usually do progress payments, based on how much, you know, and then plus the retainments that you hold back at the end.
Right, I understand, so I guess our typical, our conference, our account is doing tenth of them, so it'd be nice to.
So, if they have their progress billing in by the first of the month, could they get a payment by the tenth, is that what you mean?
By, uh, probably first by the eighth, and then gives us a day or two, gives a payment special, every now and then, but, yes, exactly what I'm saying.
Is the first the earliest you could get the billing in, so I mean, normally.
No, no, I can get to you when you want, but they're, they're paying that on the same.
I understand, but we just have to give some time, I mean, at ten days, the normal turnaround time, by the time we get the billing, to when we make payment, and I want to accommodate payments you are required to make, so I suppose maybe by, if you can do something by the twenty-fifth, that way we can get it to you by the eighth of July.
Yes.
Even if it's something you pick up here by hand, just so it doesn't have to go through mail?
Pick up a check, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That way she'll put it in, it takes even longer.
Yes, yes. Is this billing, can Julie or Lenny approve it, or does a path to process?
You can authorize him to, to approve.
Then you'll just see it in the claims later on.
Yeah, perfect.
So, it's the same way with like the fire department check, if it's already, you know, contracted, then you'll see it later in claims. All right, motion to approve the expenditure of, for Dan Davis escalating for one hundred fifty-seven thousand five dollars for sidewalk improvements of the town of Dublin.
Including authorizing Nathan to approve those progress payments?
Yes. All right, boy. However, however you gotta say it.
All right, there's a second on the floor, is everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate working with you. Thanks for your struggles and frustrations that we've come through this, so.
It's, my problem, um, and I think we said, said earlier, we can dump the concrete on the road, that's.
Yes.
And then, I assume seventy-three is what you use for, Phil, would you store some up there as well, maybe, or?
I would, yeah, I would store some up there.
There, okay. My, well, I think of the stations too, because there's a camera up there, and I'm afraid somebody might steal them down there.
Yeah, station two, yeah.
It's all millings out there, the stations, so you just gotta watch what you're grabbing, and there is some millings left, if you need millings or something there too, we got about three piles of millings, so if that helps you anywhere, we're filled, so.
All right, thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up on the list is talking about tree removal at the Dublin Village Apartments, uh, we brought this up last month, and now we have a quilt in front of us, uh, basically, they've got a tree they would like to remove, and we got a tree we would like to remove, so the plan was, if they're, they're doing both jobs, we can kind of get the best rate to remove those.
And actually, since the storm, we've added the pine tree, that's also on our, our land, um, the storm ripped off the whole top of it, um, so he included that one, that's the one for four hundred, and both of these include, um, brush and stump removal.
So, we were talking about just taking this total, cutting it in half, is that correct?
No, 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 no.
Or this is our price?
This is our price, we've got, um, the large, when we first talked about it, we had a large tree, and Western Wayne has a large tree, cost is the same, so pretty much it was wash, they pay for theirs, we pay for ours.
So, the pine tree is the town's?
It's, it's on the town property.
I would worry about.
So, it's an L from the well, or from the water tower forward, and then it.
So, do we mow it out, or does Terry do it?
No, Terry pays, he, they mow all of it, but it's our property, so our quote is for thirty-eight hundred dollars to take down.
And that would come out of it?
Yes.
You're good in that fund?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept a quote.
All right, there's a motion to accept a quote from T and M Tree Service to remove thirty-eight hundred dollars worth of tree, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alex Support local, he's a good guy. All right, next up is Blight's program, you'll have the letter in front of you from Sarah Mitchell, talking about three properties.
You did.
Two eighty-five State Street, seventeen sixty-five Spring, and two twenty-five North Johnson, um, so what we need to look at is, uh, have an asbestos investigation, if I can pronounce that right, and that was, sixty-five apiece, you sold me?
Well, no, it's, the way I was reading this, that it's seven hundred dollars for the property.
Oh, seven hundred dollars.
But it's part of the twenty-eight thousand dollars that, that sounds to me that the program, the county is paying, so this is really a contract between the county and this association.
We don't have to pay for the end?
No, you're not paying for the, this is just.
Okay, I thought we did.
This is, this is just what you're, they want you to know what kind of work they are doing at each house for this.
Okay.
So, there's no cost due, I was thinking.
That's why I said.
That's the part I didn't get.
The question I have is that the properties are still owned by the property owners themselves, I mean, and how's it, does Blight work, does the town take over the property, or does the county take over?
No, you're just still doing the work, they're doing the work, and then the property owner would be billed for how much you cost, or how much this program would cost, and it would go on their taxes, if they don't pay it, then the town would be able to foreclose on it, and become the owner at that time.
Okay.
So, we're basically like the grant administrator.
Okay.
So, eventually, we're gonna get the property.
Probably, unless somebody else, I suppose, could buy it when you're leaning to foreclose.
Did you ever get in contact with, uh, the daughter on this property of Brown Johnson?
We never talked, we left messages for one another, so, but we, we have the order, you guys approved the order last.
Right, right. I just know she had, she had questions and stuff, so.
So, do we need a motion to approve letting them do the asbestos?
I don't think so, I think this is just for informational purposes.
Okay. No partner officer unless it's signed as contract.
So, they'll have their meeting on August the fifth, and then after that, they'll start doing the inspections, so.
So, who signs, who signs off on the professional services agreement?
Well, that's Wayne County.
Wait, I, yeah, I think that's gonna be Wayne, Wayne County commissioners.
When can we expect these buildings to come down? Is there a, is there a date, or is it just somewhere in the future?
Not, not yet, because, um, as this says, they have to come in, and they have to do an inspection for asbestos, and hazardous, that kind of stuff, and that has to be cleared, um, or if there is, then that has to be included in our bid, and then we put it out for bid, for removal.
You put up the bid, I thought the county, but you said county.
If we, we are the ones that actually have to put it out for bid, and then they will reimburse, or pay for it.
You pay a percent?
If, if it's accepted, yeah.
Is that incorrect?
I guess I'm not, the way I continue to, that, of course, this is not, when we keep saying the county is, is with, um, the economic development corporates.
Yes.
Rather than the county itself, because they are administering the program, then it seemed to me that they were, who were, because it's directed to EDC, and I'm, was envisioning this, I've not talked with their attorney, or the county attorney, but I envisioned after reading this, that the, because it says written authorization from Wayne County, it never talks about, um, each individual community, and that it seemed to me that the, the EDC was the client, they would be the ones that would be signing off, they would be the ones expending the money, not only for this, but for the ultimate demolition too.
Right, but the way I understood it is, we are the ones that put it out for bid, and then as long as we had everything in order, and we submit it, then they would, they, it would go through, then pay us, we pay them, is my understanding, it, it kind of flows.
Okay, I may need to call them to see on the, on the flow, because I don't want to put you guys in jeopardy or anything, but that's why I, I felt like, because even in her cover email, it was like, this is just for you to review, I don't, I never saw them anything for just to execute anything.
Okay, but we have to wait for this report.
Right.
Yes, before we can, before we can go any further.
Okay, so, we'll talk about that more later?
Yes.
And Bob finds out all the answers we need to know?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, there's nothing you need to do right now, I can guarantee you almost on that.
Just a progress report, basically.
Yeah, and in fact, all these details, as she pointed out, that Cross, as the county attorney, is preparing that interloped agreement for the participants, and I think that will also set out who does what more detail too.
Uh, question for you, Lenny, when you get the part-time help, do you guys, and you don't have to give me an answer, and I think about it, do you guys think, with the three of you, be able to do the shelter structures we were talking about down in the park? About a substantial amount of money, that if you could do that in-house, we could save.
Well, I mean, I, I think we could do it, it's just, you know.
And obviously, it would probably be in early spring, before grass, and things like that start happening.
Are you talking about them building these shelters, still having some else built over?
And if it got to that, maybe we could approve some extra time for the part-time and temporary help to do this, since it's like an added thing?
If you think you're physically capable and skilled to do it, I mean, that's my, my question, so.
Yeah, that's not the issue, it's just time.
No, I get it, but, you know, I'm thinking in the down season, you know, between snow pushing and grass mowing, and that section of time there, it's not something that has to be done tomorrow.
Right.
Or you may find, you know, we may have a mild winter, and you're doing it in January, and, but, you know, it's part of the almanac, you're not, but we'll see. And if we, you know, if the board wants to find other quotes, I mean, it's not gonna hurt to get other quotes too, so, but these are pretty chunky prices, so. You don't care as far as the money expenditure, if it's this year or next year, do you?
No, not for that, no.
You just carry it over in the rainy day, or whatever? Right?
Yeah, we can put, um, I put.
I just don't want to get in trouble, so.
Ten percent of our budget, if we have ten percent available, we can put that over for the next year, yes.
Because they're, they're still gonna be doing the sidewalk project in the spring, obviously, we're gonna be expanding that still next year, so.
Well, this money won't come out of, that's grant money, so, um, this will come out of my normal budget, it, it, it's not a part of that.
So, do we need to do anything else with that remainder monies that we've got, sitting at the moment, of Kent State and NBA?
Because it was originally put back for matching funds for paving, that, um, with the idea that we're gonna be doing water lines, things like that, so we're gonna turn up the streets, so we didn't need it, we could use it for sidewalks.
So, he's doing patching or whatever, would that come out of that, so, speaking of which, I know you did some patching the other day, but I just come up, uh, Milton Street, between his daughter's house, and like about where Gary, or, is it Gary, yeah, Gary Longnecker's front door is, and I hit one, it might hit right off the foot, so.
Really?
Just tonight, on the way up here, so.
There's a whole world, bud.
Check out one.
Bush's house.
Who does that? Who does that?
We're spraying our mix, that's why we miss it.
I like his answers.
I think they were looking at pop.
Maybe. Give this shoe a little later, I wonder watching.
Next up is the sign for Wilson Park. We got a picture in front of it in front of you from McPrinting. And the prices are on the other paper, but it has a McPrinting business card on it. Have a single sided for four forty-seven and a double sided for four seventy-eight. So I figured it'd be a lot bigger difference.
Yeah, I did too.
Well, why not, so.
Well, of course, they have a set up fee on the first one, they already got a set up fee for the second.
So I figured, like, on the front, do this and on the back do, we do the thank you for visiting, blah, blah, blah.
Exactly.
Because we're doing two signs the same.
One on each end of the park.
So, one on each end of the park, so.
You want to check the price, but that could be the same picture.
On each side.
And I saw it.
On each side, that's how I.
Yeah, that's an order. They're set, it's a little different, so. Check with them, see, you know, they might have something simple.
And I mean, if, if not, we can, we can do it. It'd be just as well, because it says on here, you know, thanks for visiting.
Now, this is just for the sign, right? We'll provide the poles and the installation.
Yes, yes.
So we'll get some four by four post or whatever you come up with, six by six, probably even better, so.
It's supposed to be a vinyl carpet type building, it's trying, okay, you're showing pictures of holes in it like this.
Right, because this is what I made it on, a, I, I just found a place that did a free thing and let me do this on. Because his original quote was for a vinyl and I told him I didn't want that. So this is actually for J Ward, which is the same thing I got back here that they did the stuff on.
So actually what they use for billboards.
Okay, I seen the holes, I thought it was gonna be a.
Yeah.
The plan is, it's not a, it's a, they're, they're four by four, right?
Yes.
The sides are four by four, so we just cut the sheet in half and then they can put their vinyl on there, whatever it is on that, and then we can.
I didn't ask him if he could use what we had here, so I need to ask him if he can do that or, because. Yeah, I will ask.
Well, it says four by each sheet, they're gonna cut it, obviously, so it's probably the same thing.
So if, if they're gonna do the same thing if we've already got it, I can ask him if we can provide a.
Yeah, yeah, let you guys deliver it down there, so.
Yeah. And, um, I am still waiting for the company that's doing the foreign place to, um, see if they can make us a picture of our, our.
What the new, what's the new one gonna look like?
Instead of having this one. So that's, that's my intention.
So let's go ahead and approve this tonight with the possibility that it might be less if they will use our sign and that way it'll be in the works. We've been talking about this for.
Yes, two, three years.
I make a motion to accept a bid from McPrinting.
So it'd be a total of nine hundred and fifty-six.
Max.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
For the sign itself, there'll be some costs on our end for the install. Alright, I've got a motion and a second, is there any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Motion for local again, I love it. Alright, we've got the fountain coming up, did you get ahold of Brower about landscaping?
Um, he actually came in, asked some questions and was supposed to get, uh, some quotes, did he give anything to you? No? And, um, did.
I did not get a chance, I did not get a chance to reach out to him yet.
To Cecil, okay.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to reach out to him.
I checked with Brian, um, Dara, and he doesn't do it anymore, but he says T and M also do that. And he suggested Cecil Penland, um, could probably throw together a, um.
Picture, architecture.
Architecture of what would be good for that area.
Yeah.
And, you know, Lenny and I were talking, it, because kids are gonna be going in and out of the fountain, it can't be too, um, too big of a project, it might be something that these two guys can handle. And that downtime between, you know.
I, I, I mean, I suspect compared to what it is, we can do it, we can knock it out a couple hours.
I just wanna make sure we're officially using the donations, so that's my concern. With as much sincerity as possible, yeah.
Try to make it simple, because you put lots of right here, it gets trampled.
Yes.
And, you know, she even, um, Regina even made a suggestion of, if we have to replace it, because we've had to replace it before. If we have to replace it, um, get one, she doesn't mind the modern where, you know, you can fill the water bottles and things like that in, um, to keep up, because we, we got one exactly like what they gave us last time. But she's okay with that, we need to, in the future. Hopefully we don't, but, you know.
Everything went well with the budget?
Yes.
Wanna talk about that?
Yes, um, met with my, um, DLGF rep today, the budget went just fine. We do have to cut back in the NBH, but because we have been without, um, the labor position long enough, it's only thirteen hundred and forty-three dollars. So, um, instead of reducing next year's budget, we can reduce this year's budget to, um, balance. And so I am, I have a resolution twenty twenty-four R dash R five, um, basically reducing NBH and it's from the medical insurance, since we wouldn't have that expenditure.
Do you not have an NBH fund for this year, or does that, do you?
We didn't get, we didn't need tax money for this year. The only thing we used tax money for this year was the general and, um, the cemetery. And so next year it will be for, um, the general, the NBH.
Because your general is really reduced by that much, which is really uncommon.
Right.
Go like that, but yet we're then adding it to the NBH, so I was just curious how all that came around.
Yeah, um, the past, I think, three months, three years, we've not had to have money, um, tax money go to the NBH. But then that's when they started doing the restriction of, you know, the, what they give us is restricted. Half of it is, has to be restricted on what we can use it for, so we kind of split it out. Um, because we do use the unrestricted part for salaries, um, insurance benefits, um, street materials and things like that. And so, um.
So you're collecting eighteen but only spending on a budget of eleven dollars? They let you do that?
That's the maximum that we could, or the minimum was sixteen. So this is the maximum for the cemetery, which is two hundred, two thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine. And then we put eighteen thousand in there to bump my fund amount up. Because my, my fund amount is, since we've not had to use it, was extremely low. So basically, we're doing a reduction of thirteen hundred and forty-three dollars, leaving, uh, an appropriated amount in that fund of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and four cents.
We need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four R five.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash R five.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, quick update on some old business down in the park. Uh, they had the, uh, Community Club held the summer bash a couple weeks ago. That was a good event, the weather was absolutely perfect. Um, obviously could have always had more people come, but for only being the second year, I think it went really successful. Um, they had several vendors down there and had a pie eating contest, but yours truly won. And, uh, had a dump tank and Jimmy Lawrence got to spend most of his time in it. Fire department filled the water up in it. And, uh, let's see, had Sean Lamb and Janet Miller staying down there for a couple hours. And they had a silent option inside, just had a really good time, you know. Good, uh, good time to bring the community together, so hopefully they continue to build on that. And I'm just thankful that somebody's taken that project over and doing a good job down there, so. Um, and also, right before that, the community mural got done on the south side of the Community Club, so it's ready to be checked out. She may come back next month and do a couple of touch-ups on a couple of small things that nobody will notice. Um, but, uh, it's pretty much ninety-nine percent done, so be sure and check that out.
Good, good.
Share it with your friends and talk about it when they come to visit for out-of-towners and it's a neat thing to look at, so. Appreciate everybody, I'll pitch in on that.
Is the bird down here on the building done?
It is not done yet, no, he's, uh, usually works nights. Uh, if it's because it's how the paint dries or he just don't wanna stand in the sun. But normally he'll come, uh, late nights and do that, and so we gotta let him in. He plugs in like a projector or something and shines it up on the walls, so it, it helps it, I guess, at night too, so.
They have to have it done by, um, the murals have to be completed by August thirty-first.
You seen one version they put on top of the.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know when they're, they're, they're supposed to put one on the side of Lakeview too, but they've not started that one yet.
Yeah. Who, what's that supposed to be in Germantown?
I would assume it's somebody from the town, I don't know.
It's huge, okay.
I have no idea.
Um, let me see if it says what it actually is. No, it doesn't, it just says who does it, doesn't say anything about it.
I'd say the most of them just tell you who the artist was.
Yeah, yeah.
There's probably some history behind it.
I'd say the town board had approved it, so I wonder if they like, no.
And Bob has some questions.
Alright, Bob, let's go, sir.
Well, you may recall last month's meeting, you know, Kate wanted to pass on, and I emailed this to everybody afterwards, but you guys did not formally approve my new wording on the personnel policy regarding clothing, shorts.
Okay.
And so what we've changed on that dress code now, where it says, the new wording is the highlighted portion, um, and underlined in under section seven, it says, "You must wear appropriate clothing at all times to accomplish any required job responsibilities, which may include shorts if such wearing does not create an unsafe condition and which shall include steel-toed shoes to be provided by the town," that's always been in there. So this is how you're dealing with the shorts, and I think this kind of met with the intention of what you guys talked about last month. And I didn't, I think Nathan, you're the only one that responded to my email and said you thought it sounded okay, no one else said anything. So hopefully this language is alright for you to adopt tonight.
Everybody good with it?
Yep.
Any questions? Good with it, Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Very good. Alright, motion to approve the change of the personnel policy for the shorts.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I gotta catch myself, because I'm president of the Qualnas and we always say, all of those in favor say K, so I'm trying to get myself to say K.
Then the other little thing you also talked about last month was, um, in response to the police wanting to know a timeframe for payment of fines, I've added a new section to your town code, talking about the time for payment of fines. And I think this also reflected your intention. It now says, "Unless otherwise stated with any applicable section of this town code or by the creating ordinance, any fine imposed due to the violation of any portion of the code will be paid to the clerk treasurer within thirty days following the imposition of such fine. And that no court action to enforce the payment of fines shall be commenced until that running of the thirty-day period." I think that was the time period you guys all talked about, so.
And we don't need to specify if it's thirty business days or thirty calendar days, it's thirty big days.
As a practical matter, we're probably not gonna, yeah, and I'm, I don't think I'm, any, I'm not sure I've even taken any unpaid fine to court since I've been here, so it's not like on the thirty-first day, we're gonna have the paperwork ready to file suit on, so.
What ordinance number do you want to make that?
Number eight.
Eight. Alright, we need a motion to approve ordinance eight dash twenty twenty-four for thirty-day payments on citations in the city of Dublin.
I'll make a motion, we accept your ordinance number eight dash two zero two four.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes.
Here's one, you want to sign, so you guys can keep your copy. And do it under, in favor of, we had some.
Oh, yeah.
Cambridge City that were signing not in favor last night, they didn't know.
Now, let's explain, Bob, who all can issue these citations? For those, well, camera.
By law, anybody can, it can be any member of council, it, it can be your clerk treasurer, it can be your town attorney, or in most instances, it will be the police officer enforcing your town.
How about Lenny Payne?
Um, yes, Lenny could too, as a, um, employee of the town.
How about God?
For those things that are relative. Um, without him being entitled officer, I think that would be a good approach, but, sorry.
So everybody's clear?
And you might, you might also want to have some consistency, and I, at least I talked to the town marshal in Cambridge last night, that, for example, open burning, he has been giving people a warning. The first time that they might violate something, he gives them a verbal warning so that they're not immediately getting a ticket the first time they burn something they're not supposed to. So I think you need to be consistent for all of you who are gonna enforce all of that, that there would be that first verbal warning. He then gives a second time a written warning saying, hey, remember, we told you, you could not do this. Then third time is when the ticket is actually issued and the fine imposed, so.
Does it have more bite in court if a law enforcement serves the citation compared to a Dublin elected official?
Oh, it, it may, other than in court, we can have anybody come and testify as a witness, it would be a complaint that I would file. Um, after the, and of course, this is only gonna happen if the person doesn't pay their fine.
True.
Um, when you give them the fine, give them the notice, the ticket, give them the notice of violation and they pay it, then no problem to ask. But if they don't pay it and we have to go to court, would it matter who initially imposed that? Maybe, but if you have witnesses, that, the facts are the facts, the person either did it or they didn't do it. And so as long as you can prove it, I'm not sure it matters a whole lot. But yes, historically, it is generally your police department that does this.
Sure.
I'd say we need your ticket books up here, didn't they force to do it, or how do you?
I would prefer going through law enforcement personally, I mean, as far as the fire department's concerned, that's what I'd wanna do, so. But, you know, I can see Lenny doing a weed violation or something like that, that doesn't require a police officer.
Yeah, you probably already do a weed violation, don't you?
Yeah, and I generally, so, I generally give a verbal, tell them, hey, look, I'm going, I'm getting ready to send you a letter. So you probably wanna take care of your weeds. And most of the time that works, we have to send a few, but not very often. And, you know, they, they. Thought the dollar store was really pushing. Out of curiosity, what was their date that we were gonna mow?
Uh, we would, we, Monday was their last day.
Yeah.
And we would have mowed on Tuesday.
They were down to the limit.
Yeah, yeah, it had to be down Sunday.
Yep. Alright, anybody got any other, do you need to bring this up?
Yes.
Okay. Want me to read it? What do you wanna do?
Um, we only, we did not have anyone, um, run against our three counsel that were up. So Nathan and Danny and Bree, um, will have another four years' terms.
So there will not be an election.
There will not be an election.
So you just have three up this year?
Yes.
It'll be stagnant.
Yes. So congratulations. Up for the long haul this time, for a whole year.
Now, we might.
Not yet, I've got a, got a payment.
Oh, I thought that was last.
Heck no, I got lots of paper, you know that.
This is helping us stack this month, so. Yeah, we need to approve the claims. That's this page right here. Well, the guys and gal have been looking over the claims to Julie and Lenny, have you heard any updates out of Commonwealth since they didn't come this week?
Um, we will be, um, receiving bids tomorrow at three o'clock. And, um, he'll open those and then, um, we'll receive them here.
Yeah, they have, they have until tomorrow at three o'clock to turn in bids. And then we will have a public meeting opening at three o'clock. Um, what they usually do is they open them up, go through them, they table that and for review. Did you ask if we? Did you ask if we had to, if they were going to do-
We will, it will be at a, we'll have to have a work session.
Okay.
It will be at a work session, and you guys, so what they'll do is they'll go and they'll, they'll look at everything, and then they'll bring back their recommendations, and then present it to you guys, and then you guys decide what you want to do. And that would, that would be at a-
A work session and not a regular meeting?
That would have, yeah, it would be in a work session. So.
So do we need to schedule that now?
Yes. So.
Twenty-seventh?
Did he say we're good to have it on the twenty-seventh, or did he want to rather have it next week?
He said our, our normal work session would be-
The twenty-seventh? Okay, so do we do twenty-seventh? At six? At six.
And if that does happen to change, I will let you guys know.
Okay.
So, because I'll talk to him tomorrow, so I'll find out for sure when we have to do that, so. And I'm pretty sure he said that that were, our regular work session.
Do we need to have Bob present?
Um, he can, he can be, I think.
Does he need to be?
I don't think Bob's to be, I don't think so, but.
We've not.
Yeah, I don't think he needs to be, and, and that's what he said, and any of you guys are more than welcome to be there as well, he said, so.
What about work session?
Oh, the work session, oh, I don't know. He doesn't know? Yeah, that, yeah.
Bob, the work session.
That will be the, that'll be the time you guys make that decision, and you'll probably have to.
This is bidding out the work for the Okra water grant.
You'll probably want to review the contracts even before the bidding.
This isn't a contract, this is just a bid.
Or the bid packages.
Well, that's Commonwealth's job to a big bid. And then they bring back their recommendations.
Yes.
And they're going to bring back the recommendation at this work session?
Yes.
For your approval at that time?
Yes. If, if I can get it prior to then and send it to you?
Yeah, I think if I can sign off on it, I'm not sure I need to be present while you guys talk about it, unless you have-
There's just such an urgency that we can't wait till the normal meeting though.
Right.
We're getting into fall, so we're needing to-
We need to go as long as fast as possible.
Because that, next weekend's Labor Day, so we don't want to go much into that, so we're not being called doing that.
Yeah.
One point, air compressor, where did you find them at that time? Just tripped out. Oh, working for- I, I think the, probably the motor might be vibrating, the overload's downs, so I just turned it back up a bit higher, so.
Oh, okay.
They were almost just too sensitive. I will say, we'll see the Caterance Glass for when they put the new doors on the community club, I did call them and asked if they would put on the closure devices, or whatever you want to call it, that springs the door back closed, if they would put on the main door one that when you push the door open, it would hold the door open, because now, take for instance, if you're trying to move tables and chairs or something out, you've got to prop the door open, or they straighten the door the whole time they're going out as they're holding the door open, so.
Cheapest way to do that is for one of them, or foot, foot bank.
Well, we paid these guys big bucks to take care of this, so.
Yeah.
So they said they want to order one, hopefully put it in for us when they get one, so. So I want to make sure that we don't forget that that happens, make sure they do that, so they said they have to order one, so. But I could see that door getting all banged up as they're carrying stuff in and out for parties. We want to preserve those nice doors. Any more questions for the claims? Motion to approve? Motion to approve claims is presented.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, financial reports. Any, plan out the ordinary, Julie?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to accept the financial.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All approved.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes there. Any final thoughts before we adjourn? Got a couple signature sheets coming around, or at least one.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Approve.